It is nine o'clock. We will call to order the Blueworth County Board of Commissioners meeting on January 7th, 2025. First item on the agenda is a pledge to our flag. Those who are able, please stand and join us with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on our agenda is agenda review. Mr. Meyer, please.
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda today.
Move approval.
Second. Got a motion and a second discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. The agenda is approved as printed. The next item on the, under Agenda Review, tab number one, is appoint the Chair and Vice Chair. We've got in our packet, we've got the list of typically the rotation. What is your pleasure?
I would move to approve the rotation. Kip Brunder as Chair and Patty O'Connor as Vice Chair.
Okay, you have a motion.
I'll second that.
And a second discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. The Chair rotation is approved. Congratulations, Commissioner Brunder.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. And Commissioner Pat, thank you for your service the last year. You led us through some very difficult times with the dam and some very critical points in our highway building shops and some tough public hearings. So we appreciate your leadership and all your efforts throughout the year.
Thank you.
With that, we'll move on with the rest of our agenda. Our next item on the agenda is the Board Committee Assignments. In your packet.
Move approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the committee assignments. Is there any discussion? As everyone knows, we've talked about this in the past with a lot of discussions at work sessions. There's no other comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. 2025 Board Meeting Calendar. Again, very extensive discussion at work sessions. I think we got it finalized pretty well, but.
I'd move approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. At this point, I will need a motion to recess for Economic Development Authority meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. I will call to order the Economic Development Authority meeting. First item we have to deal with is the election of officers. We have a slate of officers. Myself being the Chairman, Patty O'Connor being the Vice Chair, Mark People being the Secretary, Vance Strunberg being the Treasurer, and Executive Director would be Robert Meyer.
I move the slate.
Second.
I got a motion and a second for the slate. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Agenda review, Mr. Meyer.
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda today.
Move approval. Second.
Got a motion and a second for the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. At this time, the minutes are in our packet. Would entertain a motion to accept the minutes.
Move the minutes.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. And now we got Housing Choice Voucher Utility Allowance Schedule. Nancy and.
Nicole.
Nicole, thank you. Join us, please.
You have to remember that second one. We know Nancy well.
Putting you in the driver's seat today, all right.
All right.
Well, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I'm just here to review the resolution.
Could you please identify yourselves quick?
Oh, sorry. Nicole Cunningham.
Good, I'm Nancy Bokel.
Thank you very much.
So again, here to review the resolution adopting the EDA Housing Choice Voucher Utility Allowance Schedule. The U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development requires annual review and adjustment, if required, of tenant furnished utilities. Utility allowances are based on reasonable consumption. For conservative families, provide basic essentials needed to provide a living environment that is safe, sanitary, and helpful. This year's analysis was conducted by the Nellrod Company and includes a review of consumption through the following analysis method. Costs received from local vendors in our county for heating, electricity, water, sewer, and garbage. These costs across the county were collected and averaged. The costs were compared with previously collected consumption histories of program participants. Consumer reports compiled from recent publications are used to estimate costs and life expectancy on appliances. And where limited data is available, HUD recommends the latest version of the HUD utility schedule model. This version has additional allowances for electric heat pumps, electric and gas standard fees, and AC. There is also a creation of a utility allowance for reasonable accommodations for medical expenses. The utility allowance schedule has been adjusted using the latest HUD projections where needed. The new rates do show slight decrease to electric and gas rates and increases to water and sewer rates. The use of this schedule provides average utility costs to participants who pay their own utility cost and streamlines efficiency in calculating rent subsidies using standard rates for the Housing Choice Voucher Program, public housing, and other affordable housing projects that access these schedules throughout the county. The HUD 52667 allowance for tenant furnished utilities are broken down by basic utilities subsidized by HUD. The schedules included are broken down for high-rise properties, low-rise, row house, townhouse, and duplex properties and single-family dwelling units. Utilities are included in gross rents and in estimating our payment standards. This schedule is used in determining rent subsidies when a tenant is responsible for the cost of some or all of the utilities. These allowances are based on typical costs of utilities paid by energy conservative households that occupy housing by size and type in a community. The PHA must use appropriate utility allowance for the lesser of the size of the dwelling unit actually leased by the family or the family's unit size as determined under the subsidy standards. For example, a two-bedroom single-family detached home paying electric heating is 107, cooking 12, other electricity 62, water heater electricity 35, and the standard electric $19 would have an estimated utility allowance of $235 total. We have a two-bedroom unit that rents for 850. We do add on the estimated utility expense of $235 to come to a gross rent of 1,085. Households pay approximately 30% of their income towards a gross rent. The requested action is to review and adopt the 2025 utility allowance schedules as presented.
Thank you very much, Nicole. Do I have any, do you have any questions or comments at this point?
Mm-hmm.
Very good. I would entertain a motion to accept the report.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Thank you very much for all that work. Appreciate it.
A little bit of work.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Happy New Year to you too.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn our EDA meetings.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. At this time, I will call to order the Railroad Authority meeting. Our first order of business would to appoint some officers.
I move the slate of officers.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the same slate that we had for the EDA. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Agenda review.
Mr. Chair, there are no changes today.
Okay. Got a motion for the agenda?
Move approval.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Prove the minutes in our packet. From January 2nd, '24.
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Any other business to bring before the Board for the Railroad Association? None? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Forgot discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
I don't know what there was to discuss anyway.
Yeah. Did we make it a whole minute for the meeting?
Move to adjourn.
Got a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? Is that you, Mark?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
We will reconvene the meeting, bring it back to item number five, opioid settlement fund expenditure authorization with Josh Milo. Good morning, Josh. Mr. Chair Commissioners, Josh Milo, Deputy County Administrator. Before you today, we have another request for an authorization for expenditure of opioid settlement funds. This expenditure that we're requesting is part of our opioid work group is $25,000 a year for three years for Beyond Brink, which offers peer recovery services here within our community. This is a group that really, a big part of what they do is they work with, they work with law enforcement, so they work with our Sheriff's Department, Mankato PD, they work with Human Services, Community Corrections, and so they work as peers, working with those with chemical dependency needs. And another big part of what they do is that if there is a non-fatal opioid overdose, they also get really dispatched to them as well to work with the families and with them as well to provide support. And this is, this has really turned into a pretty significant service that's been done across the state. And Beyond Brink is that we have right here that's been started in our community that has expanded. And so this is something that we feel is a, as the work group would be a good use of the expenditure of these funds. Most of the funds up until this point have been more for early intervention and for youth outreach and youth mental health. The other thing that we've done is with the startup of the Sheriff's Department's K-9 program. But this is really something specific to more with those adults, which is different and unique with the money that we spend so far. So as a result, I would respectfully request the approval of the $75,000 over three years for Beyond Brink.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Got a second. Got a motion and a second. Discussion?
That's good.
Yeah, I think this is, this will be good use of the money for these programs to try to reach out to some people that are in a little different spot than prevention.
Absolutely.
All right, if there's no other discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, Josh.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move down to administration. Mr. Meyer.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, first item is the County Board Minutes for December 17th.
Move the minutes.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the minutes. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Bills for the week.
Next are the bills for the three weeks indicated.
I'll move the bills.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on the bills that haven't already been answered? Hearing none. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, tab nine in your packet is the Human Resources Department Agenda. Have a couple of action items for the Board's consideration today. The first one is approval of a Blue Earth County personal vehicle reimbursement policy. This is a new policy and I've asked Human Resources Director Laura Alaba to present some information on that policy.
Good morning, Laura.
Good morning, Laura. Alright, well, good morning Commissioners and Chair Brunder. This morning, I am bringing before you a personal vehicle reimbursement policy. While this is a new policy that's being provided, the reimbursements for limited personal vehicle reimbursements is not new throughout the county. So this really is an intent to bring some consistency and to fill a gap between some of our other policies which describe reimbursements and stuff. So the intent of the policy is to address items that are not common, but they do come up from time to time. I'm here to ask that the Board will provide this, or approve this policy, which will provide the clarification and consistency across the department when dealing with these expenses. I have, I assume you've had a chance to review the document and you all have noticed that it addresses several areas such as reimbursement rates and expenses, accident-related reimbursements, vehicle cleaning, and insurance reimbursements, to name a few. I'd be happy to answer any questions and would ask that the Board approve this policy and thank you for your consideration.
I was happy to see this, having been an employee using my own vehicle. I think you've covered everything that has always been kind of a bad thing for employees. So I, I will move approval.
Thank you.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, is there any other discussion?
I would, I'm just asking, is there anything in here that would be not necessarily in conflict or would change, negatively change from current policies at different departments?
Not, not that we're aware of. I think as a matter of fact, this would, this would bring.
Nobody's losing.
No, no, I think in a way this could provide some additional reimbursement for folks that may not be aware.
Thank you.
We've, we've seen maybe some confusion in our staff ranks, especially in that vehicle cleaning area where they're transporting clients. People get sick or damage the personal vehicle. Sometimes staff just haven't known that they can come to their manager and say, hey, this has happened. Can, can some assistance be provided? So by formalizing some of those things, we think it'll make it clearer to our employees that that resource is available to them.
Good job.
Yep, yeah, policy looks good, any other comments? Hearing none, I have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
The second action item then is authorization to initiate recruitment for a criminal intelligence analyst, a grade five. I'm bringing this forward for the Board's consideration mostly because you've seen this before throughout the budgeting process, but I had indicated that it would be a grade four level position. As the position was developed and sent to our consultant DDA, they came back with a recommendation of a grade five, which is a higher level. And so just to get our budget adjusted appropriately to this particular level of position, felt needed to bring it back for a formal Board approval today.
I move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the criminal intelligence analysis. Any discussion, questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Then under informational items, we have filled a care coordinator in our Public Health Waivered Service Program area in Human Services. We also have received a resignation of a maintenance technician one in our Public Works Department. So we've initiated recruitment to refill that position. Then we had an increase in hours of on-call library clerk to a library technician, a part-time position there. So we've initiated recruitment to refill the on-call library clerk. We also had a resignation of a correctional officer, and so we've initiated recruitment to refill that position. We also did fill a correctional officer position, actually two of them. And then we did receive a resignation of a public health specialist in our Human Services area. Be happy to answer any questions the Board may have on any of those informational items.
Any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, move on.
Alright, tab 10 in your packet is a memo regarding crop damage payment schedule. This is an item that we typically do at the organizational meeting setting. Rates for yield as well as price per bushel for crop damages. You'll see the different rates outlined there. The yields have largely remained unchanged, but the price per bushel has been adjusted to what we believe will be a fair reimbursement. There is some volatility in the commodity market, so we may have to revisit this, or these rates at some point during the year. But at this point, we felt we'd bring it forward and recommend approval of those rates.
I move the crop damage schedule.
Have a motion of a second?
Second.
Any discussion, questions? I think in the past, we use these for ditch projects and road projects, but in my experience, we haven't had an issue with it, but it is nice to know that we can reassess the situation during this, during the year.
We have adjusted during the year when market conditions warrant that.
I appreciate that. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Tab 11 in your packet is memo regarding the 2025 publisher bids. This again is one of the organizational items we deal with annually. And so we've typically dealt with each one of these individually. And so maybe I'll start just at the top with the delinquent tax list. We had two responses to the bid. The low bid was Maple River Messenger at $6.15 per column inch. So recommending approval of Maple River Messenger.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the delinquent tax list. Any discussion, Vance?
Nope.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
The second item is the Board of Commissioners summaries. Again, the Maple River Messenger was low at $6.15 per column inch.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion for the Board of Commissioners summaries? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Number three is the legal notices for 2025. Mankato Free Press in this case is being recommended just because of the larger reach for those legal notices.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the legal notices for the year '24, any discussion?
Actually, it is, I think it should be for '25.
Any other discussion, questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
The fourth item is the layout for the annual financial statement and recommendation is the Mankato Free Press.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the layout of the annual financial statements, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Fifth item is the printing of the annual financial statement. The recommendation is Mankato Free Press at $63 per thousand.
Got a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the printing of the annual financial statement, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Item six then is the insertion rate for the annual financial statement. Here, GOES statute does require that the County Board select two separate papers. We're recommending both the Mankato Free Press and the Maple River Messenger.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the insertion rate for the annual financial statements, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Tab 12 in your packet is a resolution regarding bounties for the destruction of gophers. We are not planning to change the rate. The rate is currently $1 per pocket gopher and $1 per 13-line ground squirrel for 2025. Again, this is part of the organizational meeting requirements and have a recommendation to set those bounties.
So moved.
Second.
Second, okay. Any other discussion, questions, comments?
Well, I'm just gonna say, my three-year-old grandson, I think is gonna make a better hunter than my five-year-old, so.
Might have to work on that next year.
So be ready for this, yes.
Might have to be a little higher rate next year. That rate's been the same since I've been on the board, I believe, so.
And many townships do it as well. I mean, I know that our, our hunters in our area typically go to the town board. It's a little less intimidating when the five or six-year-old go to the meeting, so.
And those townships do then sometimes come to us for this reimbursement. But I think the townships are paying better than the county is.
I think it'd be awesome though if somebody brought in a bag full of, you know, legs to the front HR, dropped them off.
HR.
He's probably seen.
I think that'd be awesome.
I'm getting my tabs done today, can I quick get my bounty?
Just remember, it's not always Cool Whip in the Cool Whip container.
Alright, I got a motion and a second for the new bounty, the bounties, is there any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Tab 13 is a memo regarding the small cities revolving loan and ditch balance, loan interest rates. The policy has been that the Board will review and set the interest rate each year at this meeting. The interest rate shall be a half a percent less than the prime rate on the date of the organizational meeting, but shall not exceed eight percent or be less than four percent. And so based on where the prime rate is at, we're recommending the annual interest rate be set at seven percent.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the interest rate, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Tab 14 is information regarding bid package two for steel material. We did end up rebidding this particular package after Kraus Anderson did all the others. The bids that initially were returned didn't seem to match up with what was being asked for. And so the rebid was decided to be the appropriate path. We have budgeted $421,625 for the steel material. The low bid was Marshall Machine Shop at $356,000, so a good bid. There is material presented in the packet that shows the other bidders as well, but we're recommending approval of the bid with Marshall Machine Shop at $356,000.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second for the Marshall Machine Shop for $356,000. Any other discussion, questions or comments? Good bid. Okay, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, I have number 15 in your packet is a revision to the December 3rd County Board Minutes. We had an issue with a cut and paste and we cut off a little bit of the ditch levies. So we revised those minutes to capture the full list of ditch levies. So recommending approval of this revision.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the ditch levies? Had a correction to the minutes would be the official action. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries.
And then tab 16 is a resolution authorizing the County Administrator to execute an exclusive right to auction or exchange agreement for the sale of real estate. Basically, it's an authorization granting the County Administrator the right to sign a listing agreement with Wingert Land Services, Inc. to market the property known as the Poor Farm. So both parcels on the east and west side of County Road 16, the Board has indicated a desire to market those properties. The Wingert Land Services, Inc. has requested that a formal agreement be signed between their firm and the county. And so bringing it here for the Board's consideration today to grant that authority to sign that agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Again, this was talked about quite a bit at length at several work sessions. I appreciate the administration team bringing this forward and moving forward with this land agreement with Wingert.
I can tell you, word is out, I've already received a call from an interested party. So it'd be good to get this formal agreement in place and allow Wingert to formally market that property.
And I've received comments from different parties positively about us selling that property.
And as, as a Board member, our response would be to refer them to Mr. Wingert.
Yeah, this exclusive listing, it would be appropriate, like you say, that those inquiries be referred back to our agent.
Just to always keep that fresh in our mind. Alright, I got a motion and a second for the Poor Farm right to auction or exchange sale, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Do we have anything else to bring before this Board?
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Alright, thank you Bob for that. At this point, we'll move into committee reports, and I will start with you, Kevin, to my left.
Okay, after our December 17th Board Meeting, I participated in the Employee Holiday Social and then the GMG Legislative Forum after that. On the 18th, we participated in the Ambassador Program graduation, appreciated the opportunity for that, and then had a JD ditch meeting with Fairville County. And on December 21st, I attended Carol Crush's retirement event. That concludes my report.
Patty?
I too attended the social on the 17th and GMG, and on the 18th, the ambassador, and that's all I had.
Good for you. Vance?
Alright, well, we all attended the Employee Holiday Social after the last Board Meeting. The County Ambassador Program the next day. On the 20th, on Friday, I assisted Santa Claus and read to the children at the Blue Earth County Library along with Grandma Elf. So it was, fun was head by all. On the 26th, I assisted the Blue Earth County Library with the Indigenous Ride that came into town. On, let's see, and then yesterday, I had an MRCI Executive Finance Meeting. And that's the end of my.
Thank you, Vance, Mark?
Yep, I had the same on the 17th December, Employee Holiday Social, and the 18th, the County Ambassador Program. And then had, that day after that, the joint drainage ditch meeting with Fairville County. And that concludes my report.
I guess, I guess we should say that both Mark and I were sworn in this morning.
I got it on my list.
You know, so that was, that's pretty important, and I guess we did. That was pretty important.
Can't remember all that stuff.
You know, it's on my calendar, I shouldn't know.
Yeah, it's not on my calendar.
Alright, thank you, Mark. Thank you, Mark. I don't have a whole lot new to add to that, except after our Board meeting, I had an EMS call to deal with a couple of issues that had to be done right away, and then the social event was mentioned, the County Ambassador. Then I was over in Wasika County for a joint ditch meeting that, to deal with some road projects over there. And I had SECB legislative meeting that, pretty much routine, but getting spooled up for the legislative session this year, and then oath of office this morning. So if there's nothing else to bring before the Board this morning...
I move to adjourn.
Got a motion. Do I have a second to adjourn? Got a motion and a second to adjourn. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.
Pretty good. First meeting of the year and thirty-four minutes.
Don't expect, don't expect it anymore after this.